I would like to call the October ninth, twenty twenty four council, uh, city council regular meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carrie?
Yes, present.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Parker?
Yes, I'm here.
Whackler?
Here.
Kincaid?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda that's been presented.
May I ask that, please? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
With my glasses. September twenty five, twenty twenty four, council meeting minutes, ordinance twenty twenty four zero three five, accepting grant funds from the Beern discretionary grants program and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by one hundred and ten thousand in the miscellaneous capital projects fund for the Soldatna Police Department Urgent Casualty Care Project sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on October twenty third. Resolution twenty twenty four zero three two, approving lease agreements between the city of Soldatna and the state of Alaska Division of Forestry and Fire Protection sponsored by the city manager. Resolution twenty twenty four zero three three, approving the lease agreement between the city of Soldatna and the Federal Aviation Administration sponsored by the city manager. Resolution twenty twenty four zero three four, certifying the October one, twenty twenty four regular election sponsored by the city clerk. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any of the items just read by the clerk? Anyone here in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none, take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. Having no one else wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Moving on to the next agenda item, a seating of newly elected members and city clerk blanketship will now give the reelected city council members their oath of office.
So I'm your friend, but I support the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Alaska and the laws of order. And that I will faithfully, impartially, perform as council member.
It was close.
Okay, moving right along to the next agenda item is presentation with prior notice, and we will have Cassidy Cameron of the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District giving us an update.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you, council, for inviting me to give you guys an update and and get you guys tuned into what KPED has been up to. Um, you all are familiar with KPED and um, the significance it has and the role that it plays on the peninsula. And recently, uh, in the last year, you know that, uh, my successor, Tim Dillon, had graciously retired, and he's, uh, living his best life, and he had the vision to, uh, put together a succession plan and uh, make sure that the next executive director was set up for success, uh, without a lot of, um, going backwards and trying to reset, but we wanted to keep the pace that we were going in, so, um, I've been with KPED for, uh, about four years now, and newly the executive director, but was the special projects manager before. Um, so I'm very familiar with how, um, KPED is operating within all of our spaces in our communities with all of our partners and stakeholders. Um, and it's, it's been, um, incredible to be able to be a part of this ecosystem and also, uh, participate in meetings such as this, and also identify collaborations, see the interconnectedness of all of our communities and how our economies really do complement one each, one another, and how we can strengthen them all together. Um, so I just really appreciate, uh, being able to be in this position and and know all of you in us in this way. Next slide, Johnny. So we have been busy. Um, we have a lot of new things that are are kind of on on the horizon and also what we've been, uh, hatching. So as you know, we are a small team. I have Caitlin Corson, who's our programs manager, and my right hand and left hand. Um, she's been there, uh, a very long time, and she has, um, acumen that and a perspective that I really do appreciate, and and it's been great to work with her. And then we just added a new staff member. Her name's Aubrey Carpenter. I think she may have sent a few of you an intro, uh, email, but she's our community coordinator and also, um, administrative support. So she works behind the scenes, and she is also working with all of our communities to be familiar with the CIPs, um, and focus projects as well as, uh, funding opportunities that, um, you guys are pursuing, and then trying to coordinate, uh, either partnerships or other funding, uh, sources that can complement those efforts and those goals. We are, our backbone is the, uh, comprehensive economic development strategy. So that is the document that we go to for all of our focus projects and how we prioritize what we're doing for the day or for the month or for the years, years. And, um, it's a five, five-year document, and so the overarching goal is to make sure that we are contributing to the high quality of living that we're afforded here on the peninsula. Within that, we have five other goals, subgoals, um, which this year, this five, five-year section includes the, um, broadband and infrastructure technology, uh, to make sure that all of our communities, rural and, um, urban communities are connected and that they have the abilities to conduct commerce, access healthcare, education, and all of, um, the aspects that that technology affords us. It's essentially being connected to the internet is like turning your lights on. It's an essential utility, and we recognize that. We also want to make sure that the funding sources that are coming through the, um, Inflation Reduction Act and the federal bills that are, the infrastructure, uh, funding that's coming into the state right now are funneled into the peninsula and making sure that those dollars go further for all of our communities. Workforce and human capital is another aspect of the comprehensive economic development strategy that we really are honed in on and leaning into. We recognize that there is a labor shortage, not just in our region, but also nationwide, and so the, the labor market is very tight. Um, we want to attract people to come and live here, uh, work here in in various industries and and our employers' sector, but also make sure that our youth and our, uh, career-aged, um, generations have access to, uh, trainings and educations and skills, um, programs that are, um, affordable, accessible, um, and very relevant to the emerging industries that we're identifying. So we're trying to make sure that that is, is on our priority list every single day. Um, infrastructure and land use, making sure that those two aspects of development are top of mind and that we understand communities, how they want to develop infrastructure and use their lands, um, and in what ways do they want to enhance their communities by doing so. And then also cultivating and enriching business climate and entrepreneurship, as well as making sure that our regional partnerships are strong, and that we continue connecting with, uh, partners and making sure identifying those that are new around here. Recently, we have, um, contracted with a, an agency, a company, a software company called Datify, and that was one of the new, um, initiatives that we did this year was, we heard from our chambers and from our partners that there's just not relevant regional data specific to the communities that they can start to understand the industries um, and understand the visitors that are coming into their, uh, into their communities. So we contracted with Datify, which is a, a software company that aggregates and collects third-party data, and we're able to, um, specify specific regions and points of interest and then gauge, we're ba- able to look into the data that is within those, those realms. Um, I'll look at the next slide when we, I'll, I'll show you a tidbit of it. Um, we've just, uh, released our newly designed website, uh, just a few weeks ago, which, uh, you also will see a preview. We are producing annual reports. Uh, we think it's a great way to make sure that people can understand what we're doing on a regular basis and also keeps us kind of making sure that we're on focus and in line with our priorities. Recently, we've contracted a data analyst who will be, um, aggregating industry and how, industry data and also regionally specific data on on with a KPED focus and with a Kenai Peninsula focus. Um, we want to know, you know, what is happening with our unemployment rates, what is happening with our in, uh, employment sectors, who are our biggest employee, employers? Um, what is the housing markets looking like, and what are, what are the influences that are affecting our economies? And by having a data, um, analyst in-house, essentially, we're able to say, hey, could you look at, like, all of the childcare services that are in this ten-mile radius and let me know if this is, you know, what I think it is, whether, you know, people who come to live and work here, they need to be able to have childcare, uh, services, and if, if there's not childcare services, then we are identifying that as a gap. Hopefully, we're going to make some efforts to, to close that gap and make those, those services, uh, available and and those supports available. Next slide, please. So this is, uh, a page out of the Datify, uh, dashboard, and we're able to, uh, break down, uh, by community, um, certain, certain layers of data. This is, uh, the music in the park in Soldatna for this year compared to last year. So it's just a really small snippet. There's several layers that you can start to filter through, but you can see that trips, um, are separated from in-state and out-of-state visitors, and between twenty-three and twenty-four, you can see that your, your out-of-state visitors between the two years have increased for this year. So you had more in-state visitors for, for the music in the park, um, this summer. And then you can see that your, your in-state visitors were a little bit down, and we could start to peel back some of those layers and try to understand why they were down. Um, you can even get deeper into that, that data set by looking at who your in-state visitors, where are they coming from? How did they get here? How many days did they stay? Um, what other points of interest did they visit? You can also, um, collect, and and this is a small snippet, so this is a hundred percent of of the visitors. This is just one, one slice of the pie. Um, you can see what their visitor days were, but then you can look and see that, you know, music in the park was on Wednesdays, and this summer you guys had almost sixteen thousand visitors in that park on Wednesdays. Um, that's a tremendous accomplishment and a tremendous piece of data that you can then use, um, to make decisions. How are you going to pers- you know, if, let's say that the, the music in the park number was two thousand visitors and everything else was ex- you know, a little bit higher. Maybe you would want to consider, like, should we be doing music in the park on Wednesdays? Not very many people are going. But you can kind of get an understanding of what is happening on your, on your, in your communities at Soldatna Creek Park for this, and that's just one of the points of interest. This, this information, each of, um, our chambers has a profile, so your, uh, Maddie has a profile for Soldatna, and she gave us, um, she gave us dates, she gave us, um, kind of the, the hotspots that she wanted us to build out the, the dashboard for Soldatna, and she's able to utilize this, so I encourage you, um, to touch base with Maddie, and if there's things that you're looking for, or things that you're interested in, it's there. Um, and we wanted to really empower our chambers to be able to look at what their marketing efforts are doing and whether they're having a positive or negative effect. Um, and it also helps us kind of start to look at what kind of, what kind of, um, tourism industry, what are the influences of our tourism industry? How does it differ from, from town to town? How can we complement our efforts, whether Homer and Seward and and Soldatna can put together a, a joint marketing campaign committee, um, and effort? So we just feel like this is a tool that, um, we can start using, and and we brought some of the tools and the resources and and we're, we're able to use them here instead of contracting a seventy-five thousand or a hundred thousand dollar contract out to a large corporation that doesn't understand our region. Okay. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we have a new website, and Johnny, if you click anywhere, I think they told me anywhere, it'll go to the website. Um, we want you to, um, please visit our new website. There's, there's a tremendous amount of information. Um, all of our regions are, are located on there, all of our incorporated, yep, the dropdown, all of our incorporated and unincorporated communities are there with, um, with profiles, with data sets that are, are being developed that are around those specific municipalities. Our quality of life aspects are, are included on there, our highlighted industries, resources, and then, of course, our SEDs. Um, but I encourage you to visit this and use it where our, our vision is to have it be a tool that municipalities and and business owners and and developers and people considering coming here can go to and learn something, be taught something, um, be inspired by something. Eventually, we are going to be putting in some GIS mapping that will have some interactive mapping aspects with, um, housing data, employment data, labor statistics, um, uh, real estate, uh, I mean, industries, training availabilities. We're going to kind of really bolster up an interactive map where you can click and and see, you know, what your sales tax rate and what the property tax rate, what's the population, who's your biggest employer, um, and start to connect some dots that way. So we really would like you guys to visit the website. Um, if you go to the annual report, yep. This is, I believe this is in your packet, and this is, um, this is really the nuts and bolts of what we've been up to this year, and we think that it showcases all of our efforts around the SEDs, but then also our industry overview forum, um, which was held in Soldatna this year at the, uh, Sports Complex, which was very well attended. We had the most, um, the, the most attendees, uh, that I've ever experienced there, so we are trying to make sure that the content that we develop for those, those forums are relevant, that people are interested and are wanting to come and not just listen to talking heads, but actually gain something from it. Um, we have the Riverfront Redevelopment Project as one of the infrastructure highlights. We believe deeply in projects that are aligned with the community, and we think that this is one of those projects in so many ways. It has so much vision and so much value, and it elevates the peninsula in a way, um, and in a direction that we are, um, really wanting to go into. And that's, that's the report. What's on the next slide? And I think that's it. Yes. So if you have questions, uh, please go get ahold of me or my staff. We're very much available. I am very, um, interested in how, uh, you guys view your communities and what you value your communities. That's where we do our work the best, is when we understand what the priorities and values and vision are for all of our communities, and we do recognize that all of our communities are different. Um, so we want to make sure that we understand that and then, uh, advocate and support whatever, in whatever way that we can for you guys.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Excellent report.
Thank you.
Um, I found it particularly interesting when you mentioned, in terms of music in the park, in terms of on the correct day. Are there any other communities in Kenai Peninsula that have events at all of this size during the week?
Um, I'd have to double-check. I'm not, not on a regular basis.
My sense as well.
I, I think that Soldatna has the, just that continuity of the event, and that's really gaining a lot of traction. I would say that, you know, Homer has their, um, their market, their, their, um, what is it called? Farmer's Market, and it's two days a week, I believe, and I haven't run the numbers on that, but I'd be interested, but those are kind of apples and oranges, right? Um, but as far as a, an, a weekly event that people can count on rain or shine, um, I do believe that Soldatna is the only one.
I do too, but I just, I wanted to hear that confirmed, and and if there was others, I'm pretty sure we were by far the, getting the best attendance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, significantly. Um, and just a thought, in terms, I don't know if it's something that you would know or might work on. We do it on Wednesday night, which is church night, which means for a great deal of local people, they have a previous commitment. It'd be interesting to to have a sense of how many more people, local people particularly, would come if it was almost any other night, and I'm not saying weekend, but any of the weeknight other than church night, uh, because that's a group that is pretty committed. Um, but again, it's, I'm not sure if that's something that you would have data on in terms of if it was held on a different night, would more people be able to come?
I, I, I would have to chew on that for a minute before giving you an answer.
Stolen as an idea to think on. Uh, the other thing, when you listen to different things around the country, one of the issues for communities, and again, although I love Soldatna, if we're all part of the whole peninsula, do we have any bridges on the Kenai Peninsula that you're aware of that are on any of the federal lists of in need of repair?
Bridges?
Mm-hmm.
On the peninsula?
Right.
In, in need of repair?
Well, federal lists that are.
I don't know if they're federally listed, but I do know of bridges that probably could use repair and probably aged out infrastructure-wise. I'm not sure if they've made the list yet.
Is that something you could help by providing some names? In other words, you're an objective source. Again, all of us that work for, that are part of the city, we're kind of, we promote very much because we have great cities, and again, having been over at the borough for a while, I know the borough has their, but you're much more, um, objective in terms of, so I think that you might provide data that the borough might not be jumping up and down to say, oh, there's a problem with the bridge. And so I'd be interested in data that you might be able to provide to us in the city, just because we can't get anywhere without, you know, traveling on our roads, and so bridges, to me, is always a, a concern.
Okay.
Do you keep data on sales tax, on revenue going up and down?
We, we have some data sets on sales tax, yes. We are, um, required to keep them close. We cannot release them.
We in the city of Soldatna were surprised, too, that our, our revenue from sales tax, we actually had to make some little adjustments because it went down, and so I'm just wondering, it'd be interesting if it's something you could provide, whether it was just sales tax for Soldatna went down, or was it in all the different towns, and and so again, I don't know, again, what you're allowed, but again, uh, like I said, you're a subjective source rather, or excuse me, you're an objective source rather than a subjective. Um, and so I'd just be interested in any data you might have as we continue to, to plan our budgets to, to know what's happening on the sales tax.
I could absolutely dig into that.
Good.
And do a comparative analysis.
Anyone else on the council have any comments? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, and thank you, Cameron, for the presentation, or Cassidy. Cameron's the other person. Um, so I did go to your website. I have it open here. Um, one of the positive things that I see in the annual report is the, under economic landscape, it shows positive net migration to the borough for the last twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Have you delved into why people, why we're seeing that? I know we and Matt Sue are the two places in the state that are seeing an increase. Um, why?
We are, so, so we're having our data analyst dig in. We are, so, so we're having our data analyst dig in a little bit more to see what the demographics are of those, the people that are choosing to, to move here. And once we get an idea of who that is, I think that we'll be able to better, and then they're going to also correlate those with possible, um, sector employment numbers. Um, and then we'll be able to understand if there's with the, the increase of the, of our population, whether that also equates to increase in, in positions held for jobs and in what industries. But until we get that demographic kind of layout, I am hesitant to say that people are moving here for, um, jobs or retirement or school or, or certain things. I do know, just in my general discussions with, um, specifically large, our larger employers of, of the region, there are, there is an uptick in the professional level positions and we are seeing an increase, um, in people moving here with, with families and that are working career oriented, uh, positions. So I lean that, in that direction, but I also think that people are moving here from in-state. Um, so they're moving out of Anchorage and just need a change and are coming down here and finding options down here. There's also a good, um, portion and a good percentage, and I can't wait to get the numbers behind it, of remote workers. Um, so remote work, uh, was one of the highlights and silver, silver linings of the pandemic in terms of how people work differently now. And with remote work and connectivity, good connectivity, people are able to be a little bit more nimble in how they, um, how they are, are working and, and, uh, earning a living. And so the remote workers, I have a hunch have a part of that.
And one, just a quick follow-up. With the data that you've collected, have you identified where in the borough people are landing? Is it here in the central peninsula, Homer? Do you know that?
That's one of the layers that we're working on.
All right.
So we will, and so you know, I, I love that you guys are into this, right?
Yes.
Because, uh, our data analyst, he will be, um, so we're going to, we're meeting every two weeks to make sure that like, he's getting us the things that we want and we're doing the reporting that we want. And so these are those pieces that we need to hear, that you want to know how, how those are broken up, who's coming here, what are they doing, where are they going? What's, you know, you're interested in just as much as I am, uh, about what, what does that look like? And so the data is telling us a story, right? And it's informing us in ways where we can better, um, plan, we can better meet the needs, we can bet, do things better for the people that are coming into our communities. And I do think it's a highlight that we are having in migration versus the out migration of the rest of the state. Um, that's a highlight and that's something that I am so proud of and I think everybody should be proud of. And we should see that as an opportunity to seize upon, um, and understanding what, who that is, right? Is, is going to get us further down the road.
Any other comments from the council? Saying none. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for having me.
Very informative. We look forward to some of that other additional information.
Yeah. Thank you for having me.
Next item, uh, presentation from Dr. Cheryl Seemers from the Kenai Peninsula College. And if I mangled your name, I apologize.
It was perfect. Cheryl Seemers. Thank you Mayor Whitney, and thank you council for inviting me here tonight to give an update on Kenai Peninsula College. I'd like to say that it's a privilege to represent KPC tonight because it represents a longstanding history in the community of involvement, engagement, and offering educational opportunities. I'm a firm believer that a local college in a community is one of the elements that make it thrive. People can access higher ed if they're here, can pursue personal enrichment through ongoing courses, and we can engage in vital ways with our many partners that are represented across the peninsula. I've been speaking lately as I go to different events and it was fun to see Caitlin here because you, um, we often partner at different events and I get to share. We are celebrating our 60th year, so it is a longstanding, rich history. And I've gotten to talk a lot this fall about Clayton Brokaw and his commitments to community and the way he founded the college, um, and drove around the peninsula in his blue sedan, sharing the importance of higher ed opportunities. So when I share tonight, it's just standing on the opportunity that Clayton and others have provided and that you as council members are so committed to offering. So I just wanted to open with a thanks and to share with you our mission. Kenai Peninsula College is committed to excellence in education, training, and lifelong learning by offering accessible opportunities in a supportive environment. We're committed to excellence. I often say our faculty and staff are above other entities throughout the state far none, but of course I'm going to be biased. And that we put the punctuation mark on supportive. Um, we've been committed at KPC that when students come into our doors, that we'll hold their hands, so to speak, that you'll get a real person, that when you dial our number, it won't be a commu-, uh, a chat box on the other end, that you can engage with a real person to help walk you through the process. Um, next slide. While I often emphasize our local commitment to this community, I've also been sharing of late our place in the UA system. We are one community campus of a large networked system involving UAF, UAS, and UAA. Why is that important to know? Because when people drive by, we want them to know that we can be an access point to a vast array of opportunities in our state. We are well-connected and post-pandemic, we are even more well-connected as we are bringing more opportunities through online offerings. So you can see our sites there. And when I mention our sites, I don't know about many of you, but I have a 22-year, um, history here on the peninsula. And I know that some of the families here have a much longer history, but I love seeing those circles on the places on the peninsula. When I drive down the arm, I'm coming home. And so many of us are. We're committed to where we live and we love our place. Having the opportunities of a comprehensive university system right here in connection with KPC is absolutely vital. Next slide. And there are our three locations. We have our Catch Mac Bay campus down in Homer. We call it our Kenai River Campus, for those of you who may not be familiar with that term, here in Saldana, and an extension site that operates out of Seward High School. Next slide. We offer local degrees and certificates. I've listed some up there, um, but if you go to the next slide, we're offering also connecting, and this is the point for the university system, four-year and master's degrees that you can connect online through UAA, UAS, and UAF. So if you take a look at this next picture, this is fun coming up. I highlighted just a graduation we held in Homer because it's unique. So in the first one, you see a graduate getting hooded for a master's degree on our Homer campus. At the same graduation ceremony, we saw our own Kim Frost earn her PhD through UAF. And our valedictorian at the Homer campus completed after what she calls many years, decades of pursuing higher ed and getting a degree locally through KBC. And, uh, one of our board of regents commented, it is so great to hear that story of commitment. Next slide. How do we do that? It's always a question. We focus on face-to-face classes, asynchronous ones, online and Zoom. There's the phrase, you can't be all things to all people, but I like to say we certainly try so that we meet students where they're at. Next slide. And always of interest to our communities, our high school students, the opportunities that they can get here and expand with. Most of you know that, um, middle college or dual enrollment is a growing national trend and we wanted to make sure that our students here could have the same opportunities and access that you see in other places. So in collaboration with the borough, um, and KPBSD, we have 270 Kenai Peninsula Borough High School students enrolled in 90 different courses for fall of 2024. 220 of those utilize the Jump Start funding that's offered through the borough. They represent 18 schools, three homeschool programs, and one private school. That's a large reach and we are up to over 1,700 credits taken by those students. As we've, I've often emphasized, we have students finishing AA degrees by the time they graduate high school and that's exciting. It's also cost savings and helps them launch into their next steps. Next slide. Uh, just briefly, career and technical education opportunities as well, our EMT courses. We are launching more Yamaha basic outboard maintenance this fall and our certified nurses' assistant. That's just a small smattering, but I thought it would give you an idea. Next slide. Um, and we are doing partnerships and programs that are actually expanding camps for those same sets of students, some in partnership with Kenai Sea Indian Tribe for Dual Credit. Alaska Excel comes from all over the state, there's just a few. Next slide. All to say, altogether, our primary goal is to provide the Kenai Peninsula Borough residents the opportunity to pursue post-secondary education. Next slide. And good news, enrollment is up, we're up 11%. And so we're super excited that, from fall because as the next slide will show you, um, I call this our smiley face slide. It actually makes us smile and we're happy about it. In 2019, you can see where our numbers were at. Of course, you see the dip. We know what that's all associated with right there, those a few years that we were re-establishing, getting back through the pandemic. And in 2024, our headcount is up over 2,500 students. You have a small, um, but mighty local college. Next slide. And again, coming back to this first slide, I shared those numbers with you. I, I circled some things. Um, KPC, um, tends to be almost as large as UAS in its entirety. So if you think about that big university, we're one campus of a larger system, but almost as large as UAS. Next slide. We are a employer on the peninsula. So many of our people are committed here, have families here, and they contribute to the growth of Saldana and the area. So we're about 224 strong this fall. Next slide. Trying to meet community workforce needs, I highlighted some of the programs I know you all probably know about. I call them our high flyer programs. They're often the ones you see pictures in the papers on or we talk about a lot. Course process technology, um, our welding program, those two, it's hard to even keep students in classes because once they get the certifications or the technology, they're scooped up by the job market almost immediately. EMED and CNA, um, with some of our largest pools of applicants and it continues to grow. The new, we call it Yamaha program, but it's basic outboard motors, um, that we'll be looking at. And of course, our highly popular Kenai River Guide Academy that puts guides on the rivers. Next slide. Just wanted to stress as we come to a closed community and city connections, um, we are about engagement and it's a passion at the college. There's a showcase event, um, that's an author speaking about a book. We bring in the community for free just to hear talks if they want to. You can see one of our professors at a local, um, elementary school connecting with students. Our faculty and staff do community engagement and service. And of course, our KPC residence hall, I made sure to put a slide in because I often get questions about that. That was called, put on a hiatus for a period of time, was going to be one year because enrollment in the hall had dropped, um, and then COVID hit. And so we used it for other purposes. We've been building our business plan for reopening, um, and also doing smaller programs as we go. So we had the opportunity to host some interns, teachers who were up for KPBSD and in a partnership with them, they got to live in the residence hall for a period of time. Some of them even just walked down to KBG Elementary where they were serving as interns. So super exciting opportunity there. We've hosted a few events, um, and camps out of the hall. We continue to house students on short-term basis, um, that are coming in for intensives. That's an exciting opportunity there as well. So, um, that's where we're at with that. Next slide. So I wanted to end by saying thank you and to open for questions.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. Um, I, I view the Kenai Peninsula College as one of the legs of, in our stool that we have in our community. Located in this, in the city, we've got the Kenai Peninsula College, we've got the hospital, and then we have the business community. So, you know, as a community, we're very, very fortunate. The fact that Kenai Peninsula College is one of the, the, it is the largest community college, sis-, campus within the entire system within the University of Alaska. And for the eight years I sat on the Board of Regents, I was very proud. And the other aspect is that as, as a borough, we are very strong and supportive through that 0.1% tax that we pay, we all pay, that goes to support Kenai Peninsula College and the students through the Jump Start Program. Um, and I had asked Cheryl to come because I don't think, from a council standpoint, we've never had a presentation from Kenai Peninsula College to get that overview, for people to understand that within the university system, this campus is one of the keys and is, is a core. So, um, I, I applaud you, Dr. Seemers, and all the staff, um, and the students at KPC for what you've done.
Any other council comments or questions?
Um, I utilize the Jump Start Program and I'm very thankful for the college. And, um, one question I have, I was talking to my friend about it earlier today. Um, she wants to do the CNA program, but it's only on Fridays and she's busy with sports. Are you guys planning to, um, make more CNA program classes and opportunities for people who might be involved in other things, especially on Fridays and on the weekends?
I would be happy to look into that for you. We used to have, um, two courses, um, and we dropped down to one because as you all know, the hospital launched an in-house program for CNA training as well. So Friday seemed to be the day, but I would be happy to take that back to the instructor if that's, if that's a need out there.
Thank you.
And I was excited to see the student representative here tonight as well. I know we've done that on many of our committees and your voice is so important, so. It's a chance to say thanks to, to the mayor and others. So many times when we have an event, um, you come, you represent, you support the students and your presence makes a difference. So thank you.
I do have one question. You talked about students and the high school students and everything attending. Is there any special programs or relief or anything for seniors?
Yes.
Senior citizens, not senior high school students.
Yes, we do. We do. Um, we have, uh, discounted tuition, I think, in some, in some cases and then, um, but they just register a little bit later. And we have, we have thought about growing that program. So with that, I would actually invite conversation on where we could go with that because that population from, I gotta have to look at Caitlin. I believe it said, you know, it's kind of growing here. I've heard people say they want to come here, retire, do other things, and I have a keen eye to improving what we can offer in that area, not just credit-bearing courses, but what would be the non-credits and what would be a couple nights a week? What would you like to see? What would engage people, especially with, um, we used to offer in collaboration with community schools, more classes. So I think, I think we could do some work there and it would be exciting.
Yeah, because I, I probably believe that, um, our area here is growing with, um, senior citizens probably as, as quickly as anywhere else. A lot of people who've lived here for years, um, continue to live here even into their senior years and more are moving here for retirement. So good project. And thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it very much and I believe this is the first time the university has been here. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. I hope, I hope we can come back. We'd be happy to bring you a report next year and I hope it's good news then as well. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? And please step forward and state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes.
My name is Jenny Nyman and I'm here on behalf of Salteshi Trails Association, your neighbor right across the road on K Beach. Hopefully you all received an invitation to our open house this Saturday for our new maintenance building, uh, which I realize a building our size is not as exciting as your field house, but it is a very big deal for us, so we are excited. I also realize, folks, my- I also realize folks might already have plans on a Saturday afternoon. So I wanted to come and just let you know how much we appreciate the support from the city of Soldatna. A lot of trail facilities in the state are part of municipal parks and rec departments. We are on borough lands. We always knew that was not going to be an option for us. So it has been even more meaningful to be adopted, if I can say, by the city of Soldatna over the years. The non-departmental funding that you have provided has stabilized our budget. It's allowed us to plan for the future and handle all the unexpected costs that inevitably come up, which lately has been clearing fifty dang trees every time the wind blows. We started with six kilometers of trails in the early nineteen nineties, and we now have nearly forty K of trails. Skyview High School at the time was the only school in the area with a ski team. We now host practices and races for teams from across the state. We have had kids grow up at Salteshi who have gone on to compete at the world stage. And more importantly, I think, we are now on generations, plural, of kids that we have taught to love to ski and love to run and love to bike and love to just get outside and be active. I don't know if you have ever tried to ski at Salteshi while playing on your phone, but it is not possible. So, um, and the support from the city has been a big part of that, and it is not just the grant. It is also the endless amounts of advice and patience and help from the folks in your Parks and Rec Departments. It is so wonderful to us to know that if we have a problem, we can run to Big Brother across the street and they will have our back. Uh, so if you can make it on Saturday, we would love to see you, one to four P M. Uh, behind Skyview Middle School, the pool entrance, we would love to show off. We truly have a world-class trail facility and the city of Soldatna has been a big part of that. So, thank you.
Well, I have you on my schedule for Saturday.
Wonderful.
And if I tried skiing on those, that would result in broken bones, so.
We, we also have multi-use trails open to walkers. Um, kick sleds are getting very popular for folks with mobility issues, so we got you covered.
Oh, great.
We'll take you up on that.
Broken bones and all. Any questions from the council?
I'd just say thank you for all you do, and if there's anything else that we can ever do to help, just let us know.
Oh, we are, we are an active bunch. We always have plans, so. But I, I mean, I know we come to you at non-departmental grant time and, you know, we, we do the, the please and the thank you, but I just, this project has been such a milestone for us. We are very much like playing the dirt people. So to have an actual building with a foundation and running water and a restroom for our volunteers for the first time in thirty years has just really made us reflect back on, you know, what it took to get to this point. And, you know, the, the amount of funding that you give us, the, the thirty thousand dollars now in, in the scale of the budget of the city of Soldatna, I know it's not make or break for you, but it literally was make or break for, for Salteshi. It took us from scraping by month to month, wondering what we're gonna do when our snow machines broke down to being able to know we can get through winter and provide for the kids and the community and just, just have that stability to think ahead. It, it really revolutionized our organization to be able to grow to the point we're at now. So I, I don't know if you all, all realize how important, you know, fifteen thousand dollars and then twenty thousand and then thirty thousand can be to an organization like us, but it, it truly has been meaningful.
Any other comments from the council?
I wanted to say thank you too. I was just ran cross-country and the trails are always like very well-maintained and it's like really nice. And I've loved running on them. And I don't personally ski, but I have a lot of friends who ski and they love the trails and they're so excited to ski when it starts to snow. And yeah, that's, but they've been great.
I'm thrilled to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you again, and see you Saturday. Anyone else here in the chambers wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Saying none, we'll take a look at Zoom and there are no hands raised there. Moving on to the next item is Assembly and Legislative Reports. Um, I see no members of the Assembly or Legislature here, and I see none on Zoom. So, next item, unfinished business. Uh, postponed item twenty twenty-four dash zero three two, amending Soldatna Municipal Code, Section seventeen point one zero point three seven zero, Mobile Home Parks and Section seventeen point one zero point three three five landscaping to increase the notice period for tenants, add water and sewer service standards, and provide consistency on buffer landscaping requirements for mobile home parks. Introduced by, uh, Councilmember Chilson. Uh, there's already a motion on the floor to enact, so, uh, report from Councilmember Chilson.
Uh, I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor, uh, and further discussion with the city administration. Uh, there came to light some additional improvements that we would like to make on this. And to that end, I would like to make a motion to postpone this ordinance to our October twenty-third meeting.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna open it up for public hearing first and then you can make a motion after that.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, which is, uh, Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three two? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on that ordinance? Saying none, we'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there, so now we'll go back to Mr. Chilson for your motion.
Uh, I would make a motion to postpone this, uh, ordinance to our October twenty-third meeting.
I have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Any discussion? And we'll call for the vote then.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Okay, uh, Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three two has been postponed on a six-zero vote. Moving on to the next, uh, agi- item, uh, agenda item is Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three three, repealing Soldatna Municipal Code, Chapter three point one eight, Special Assessments in the Act, and, and acting Chapter thirteen point two one, Special Assessment Districts, introduced by Vice Mayor Parker. Uh, the motion to enact has already been on the floor from the September twenty-fifth meeting, and so we will move on to the report from Councilmember Parker.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, I gave a brief report at our last council meeting, and at this point, I would, I have been working diligently over the past many months with our city manager on this issue. So I'd like to guess the city manager to give a report, please.
Thank you, um, Vice Mayor Parker. Um, as the Vice Mayor stated that we've been working together and, um, I jokingly say that I hijacked her original ordinance. Um, she originally, um, brought to me the timeframe regarding SADs, and I decided to add other language and ultimately repeal the entire chapter and rewrite the entire chapter. So thank you for, um, allowing that and working with me. Uh, the, really the reason for the repeal and then the rewrite is mostly because it was extensive and it was easier to repeal and rewrite. But it, the ordinance does, uh, you know, as it stated in your packet, but provides for more detailed procedures and the legal frameworks. Um, and it provides stronger guidelines for the roles of the city, detailed requirements, petition signatures, and enhanced provisions, um, including payment and reassessments, legal enforcement. And, um, so it, as a home room municipality, we have other provisions that we can use, um, rather than the Title twenty-nine provisions, we are allowed to, um, establish our own processes and procedures, which really align with Title twenty-nine, but, um, so what I did was remove Title twenty-nine reference in most areas. There's still some, and then provide our own process and procedures, which I, quite honestly, didn't really deviate from what we had, but just added more, um, process. And I can go through a few of them. Um, it, the purpose statement really did expand and clarify the language that was existing to add more language about, um, design, plan, specification, administration, engineering, architectural, legal, construction, repair, reconstruction, and other improvements. Um, it was really implied in the original language. It just expanded and stated it more clearly in the ordinance. In Section, uh, thirteen twenty-one oh three oh, District Initiation, also clarifying, and it really goes with oh four oh to the new, the language in oh four oh, which was partially from the existing language, um, clarified really the process to submit an application for an SAD. As far as previously, it would, the process would originate with the city clerk. Um, rather, now it's administering with city manager and the team, and then goes back to the city clerk for a petition. And we're hoping that will help streamline with the applicant, um, because then we'll be able to talk through Kyle's team and, um, the other, other directors and provide the information. So there's not a back and forth for the city clerk, so. Um, we're, and then eventually goes to the city clerk for the petition process. Um, uh, it, as, increased estimated costs. As you know, we did have this occur on a, a recent SAD. And the language, language provided is for some process. There's additional language providing, um, clarifying the process and really some city council approval by resolution, by a separate resolution, because we questioned whether we needed a separate resolution and, you know, exactly what do we do next? So it's been clarified to add the second resolution approval by city council and appropriation of additional funds. Also, the, um, Special Assessment District Use of City Funds Policy, which as you know, you do have a policy. I did make a title change to, and you will see, um, at some point, if this ordinance is adopted, the policy will come back before you to, I call it marry up with this language and sync together with this language. Um, and that will come back before you at a later date. It continues the process that you started, that you approved, excuse me. Um, I, Vice Mayor Parker could speak to the timeframes, but the, um, shortened timeframe is in the ordinance as well. And in one four oh, additional language has been added regarding the initial grace period of sixty days for, um, an SAD. So there's a grace period before payments are, have started and the ability to repay. And, um, there's also, excuse me, a new section containing public hearing notice provisions. Um, all of that has been put together in one section, and thank you to the city clerk for helping with that section. And one other, um, oh, in one seven oh, one eight oh, one nine oh, or is all new language, um, that was not in the original ordinance, but new sections that provide the authority, guidance concerning liens enforcement, written objections to the assessment, and appeal to Superior Court. And thank you for our legal team for assisting with that. So that's kind of the high-level overview of the changes. And if there's any questions, I can speak to rest, any other changes?
Were you going to add anything more, Vice Mayor Parker? Okay. Uh, moving on, um, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three three? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on it? Saying none, we will look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Uh, having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three three passed it, I have, passed on a six-zero vote. Moving on to the next items on the, our next item on the agenda is Mayor and Council Reports. Uh, Mayor's Report is, uh, um, City Manager and myself, we had the opportunity to, uh, tour the Cooper Landing Bypass, uh, project, uh, yesterday. Uh, amazingly beautiful day out there. And it's an amazing project. It, uh, it's, uh, a huge undertaking. Uh, it's gonna take maybe into twenty thirty-two before it is completed. So sometime between twenty thirty and twenty thirty-two, uh, seeing that bypass. Uh, the most, um, the largest portion of that, of course, is the bridge. Uh, that bridge is going to be constructed, um, uh, over Juneau Creek area. Uh, that, my understanding is that, uh, entire bridge will be constructed on the land and then rolled over and connected to the, the pillars and the, the, um, uh, supports. Uh, it's going to be quite a project and they're looking at doing that in, I believe, in twenty twenty-six. Uh, completing that in twenty twenty-six. There is going to be, uh, I believe they said six and a half million cubic yards of fill needed to complete this project. Um, and, um, probably the, the major part that I'm really, really looking forward to is the S-curves down there by Soldatna, our sunrise, um, um, by sunrise are going to disappear. That will all be torn up, um, and made more into a straight stretch that will then connect in with the portion that's being constructed right now. So it's a major project. Um, um, it'll be a absolutely gorgeous once it's completed. Uh, there's a view from up there looking back towards the lake that is amazing. Um, hopefully I'll still be around in twenty thirty-two to be able to drive on it, but, um, maybe I'll just be walking on it, who knows? But, uh, that's, uh, the only thing I had to comment about tonight. So we'll go on to council reports on the commissions, and that would be the October second, twenty twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, Vice Mayor Parker.
Um, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, Planning and Zoning had a couple of variance requests before them, uh, regarding building setbacks that they granted. They got updates on, uh, Comprehensive Plan and a schedule associated that, with that that's coming forth. They also, um, got update, there will be an open house coming up later this week on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that open house is from, on the tenth of October, from six thirty to eight at the library. Um, and, um, they discussed potential amendments to the, the zoning code, but, uh, there wasn't anything super contentious at the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
Any questions from Vice Mayor Parker? And I just thought of something that, uh, when she mentioned that the Sterling Safety Corridor Project is going to have a public hearing on October twenty-fourth from four to seven P M. in the, um, Sports Center. Next item on the agenda, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Madam Clerk is going to bring up some photos that I thought I would share with you of items that are, have been in the works, as you know, for a long time and, um, kind of celebrating some checking of the boxes. And, um, the first one being?
Blue sky.
Um, number one. Thank you. Um, the field house paving. I know it's not, you know, something that everybody celebrates, but we are celebrating that the paving occurred before the plants shut down and, um, Kyle, uh, how did it go? How was the paving?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, paving's been great. Uh, there's been striping since this photo. It almost looks like a rendering, but, uh, that's actually just an iPhone photo, so. Um, no, the, we are completely paved out at the field house. Um, so next spring, uh, it's just landscaping and obviously a, a ton of other work, but, uh, all the paving is complete at the field house.
And then the next photo that you'll see, and, um, speaking of iPhones, these were Kyle's iPhone photo, so thanks, Kyle. Um, this is the interior and Kyle, if you could speak to the, this one and the other photo that you sent me is coming up.
Yeah, you can see we waited to pour the interior slab, uh, until we've conditioned the space. Uh, you can see some create beams down there, but, um, you can make out the perimeter track, uh, and some of the pan decking that's, that's already down. This view is looking, uh, to, toward the river. Um, so the admin and the offices are, are kind of to the back, but, uh, still a little bit of light coming through, not quite done with the roof, but within probably a week and a half, uh, it will be totally closed in and ready to, uh, uh, handle winter and snow. So things are, things are coming along really well. Uh, this is just a view, uh, from upstairs on the track. You can see we haven't poured, uh, anything on that or the, or the track, but, um, pretty impressive view. Um, it's gonna be, you know, no guardrails or handrails, those will go up obviously, but, um, another interior shot.
As you can tell, a lot of work has occurred and, um, um, as offered previously, if you'd like a tour, please let me know. Um, I'll coordinate that with Kyle and CO and make sure that you get a tour of the facility. The next few photos, there's Soldatna Creek Park, as you know, the ATAP. Project, no, go ahead. As you know, the ATAP project, no, what? ATAP project that has been in the works for quite a long time. That project is also, and the trail has been paved. Kyle, if you want to speak to these.
Sure. Yeah, this is in front of the parking lot. You can see, you can make out the, the band shell in the background. The, the project consisted of, of two new sidewalks on Homestead, and there was kind of three phases. Two sidewalks on Homestead, a new trail along Forty-seventh Street and connecting near the watershed form to Soldatna Creek Park, and then all of the existing gravel trails in the park have been paved. So I think we probably got another shot that you can, you can see a little bit better. So there's the band shell and the little side awnings. The paving wraps not just in the park, but also to the restrooms, and then connects to the, the new trail alignment past the watershed form. So, with this trail system, it, it connects Swiftwater Park. You can walk along Leanberry, and the pedestrian path over to Soldatna Creek to Homestead, all the way to the park, and then the existing trails and boardwalks, you know, that, that drop down to the river and continue on towards Binkley Circle and Turn Circle. So, long time coming. This is a, the product of a grant that we received from this, from the state, federal money through the state. There was a, a small local match, but it was about a, I want, I think it was about an eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar construction bid to complete this work. So, long time coming. We're excited to finish it. We still need to work the edges and do some landscaping. The project will remain open until the soils and everything are established in the spring. But all the paving in this project is also a complete, big milestone.
Then the next two photos that I have are from yesterday's tour. If you wouldn't mind zooming in on that. And this is what the mayor was speaking of, the connection that will, the bridge that'll go over the creek there. This picture is very deceptive. It looks like a very small crane where the, the tube is there. There is a technical term that is not coming to me, but the tube there laying on the ground, pours on the ground, there is a, it is a drop-off there. In fact, we had to stay behind that yellow line that you can see. But it is a drop-off, and as you can see, there's a vehicle down in there. But this is where the first pylons, or I guess it would be the abutment, would go, is going in right there to cross over the creek. It is, like I said, massive. This is very deceptive, looks small. I understood that, like you, Mayor, that the bridge is coming up from the Lower Forty-Eight and then will be rolled on to the pilings over, all the way over to the other side. There's another picture there. And, and that, it's hard to fathom how that will be done, crossing over, especially with the weight and the counterweight that was needed, that's going to be needed. The, once it's set, it will be the highest, let me verify, I have some information, the highest, I know I can't find it, bridge here in Alaska. It'll be higher than Hurricane Gulch, the Hurricane Gulch Bridge, if you're familiar with that bridge.
And actually, where those pilings are located at, they're going to fill in that area so that it's up to ground level. So there's a lot of fill that's going in all over there. They were using forty-ton dump trucks, but they've increased those to eighty-ton dump trucks, and those things are a little bit on the large side. How they got them in there and how they're going to get them out of there, that's their project. Okay, actually, it was suggested by someone that we buy a couple of those for the city for snow removal.
I tried talking him into it, he said.
Well, I could just see Kyle up there driving one of them, but, okay, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Seeing no one here, we'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised there. Moving on to the next item, council comments, and we'll start with Mr. Chilson.
No comments.
And we'll go to Ms. Whackler.
No comments.
Mr. Nelson?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Carey?
Just congratulations to the two re-elected council members.
Ms. Hutchings?
Well, thanks for re-electing me. I appreciate it from the public, and I'm sure Jordan does, too. But I did want to say I walked the trail from Don Jose's all the way to Lucy's, and it's a nice walk. It's, they've done a very nice job, and they have done some of the landscaping along that part of the trail. It was enjoyable, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad to see that trail finally coming around since it's been on the agenda for many, many years. I'm also excited that we approved tonight a lease with the State of Alaska Division of Forestry and their relocation of forestry out to the airport, which will provide better access for them in responding to fires on the peninsula. Thank you.
Ms. Kincaid?
I actually have stuff tonight. So here's some stuff from Soldatna High School. So for our sports, cross-country just wrapped up. Our girls team that went to state got eighth for the D-one division. Football, volleyball, and swimming, and drama, debate, and frenzies, D D F are all going strong, and I'll report on how they're doing next time. For what else is going on for students, our Halloween dance is coming up, and we have some students who are involved in theater at Triemperent Theaters Production. The St. Broadway out in Nikiski is going on Friday and Saturday night. I'm not in it, but I'll be watching, and I hope that you guys will, too. And our food drive is coming up. We don't have anything out yet, but we will have some things out for people that, from the community to be able to donate to our food drive.
Thank you. Move along to the next agi- agenda item is executive session to receive advice and provide direction to the, to the city attorney concerning the Supreme Court decision, City of Soldatna versus State of Alaska Local Boundary Commission, A S forty-four-point-six-three-point-three-one-zero-C-three, matters which by law municipal charter ordinance are required to be confidential, therefore may be held on executive session. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to enter into an executive session to receive advice and provide direction to the city attorney concerning the Supreme Court's decision, City of Soldatna versus State of Alaska Local Boundary Commission. The executive session will include Mayor Whitney, council members, city manager Bauer, Public Works Director Cornelius, city attorneys, that I can't pronounce the names. Help me on the one. Thank you, and George, and city clerk Blankenship.
You have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Saying none, we will convene into executive sessions. Once the council returns from executive session, the Zoom meeting will be resumed.